From current government television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Okay, board to reconvene. Good morning, Madam Clerk. Would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Gleason.
Yeah.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggard.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Thank you. Supervisor Perez.
Here. Thank you. Supervisor Couch is still under quarantine, so he will be participating by teleconference today. Welcome Supervisor Couch. We can hear you and we heard you in the roll call.
Thank you.
Good morning to staff and of course Kern County. Welcome to the Tuesday, November 17, 2020, Meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We will begin today's meeting with a flag salute led by our very own Supervisor Mike Maggard. Following the flag salute, please remain standing for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer.
Salute. Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
Thank you. As we do every Tuesday and is usually a highlight of our board session, Mr. Nick Cole, Director of Animal Services, will come out with our precious little pet of the week. Oh my goodness, who do you have there?
Good morning. Lucy. Lucy's about a two-year-old Chihuahua Longhair Chihuahua mix. She's probably got a few other breeds in her too, but our chief county council spent some time with her this morning. She's a super sweet little girl.
How old?
She's a little over two years old. She's not going to get much bigger than this, but she's very reserved, very relaxed. We were just saying how anxiety-ridden some of the shelter dogs are, and she's a good example of that. We're trying to get her just to relax and come out of her shell, but she's going to make somebody a really good family pet. I'm sure her personality will come through when she gets adopted.
Wow. It is, she is gorgeous and she reminds me so much of my sister's dog. Oh my gosh, almost identical, so beautiful, light eyes too. What a gorgeous, gorgeous baby. She will make somebody a very warm and full home.
Her eyes match her coat.
I know. It's, she's gorgeous, wow. Good luck Lucy, we wish you the best.
Thank you.
A good holiday season is coming for you, is my prediction, Kathy Kraus. Thank you, Mr. Cole. The county of Kern has provided notice that as a result of the declared federal, state, and local emergencies due to the COVID-19 pandemic and in light of the governor's order, this Board of Supervisors meeting is not physically open to the public. Testimony and general public comment can be given through email or telephone to the clerk at the board prior to today's meeting, and live comments through teleconference will be heard during the meeting. We will begin by considering the consent agenda. All items listed with a capital C, capital A above the item listed are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be conducted, excuse me, considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item or items on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken on consent. A member of the board may remove any item from consent and it will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. A member of the public may also comment on any closed-session item. So let's move to our consent matters. Again, they're listed with a C and C-A for consent agenda. Begin on page two, items one through seven. Page three, items three through 13, and item 15.
And through 13.
I'm sorry, on page three, items 10, okay, items 10 through 13, excuse me, and item 15. On page four, items 16 and 18 through 24. 16, excuse me, and 18 through 24, and on page five, items 25 and 26. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes ma'am.
Three's a charm, I guess. Thank you. Gentlemen, your wishes on consent? Do we have comment? Okay, first public comment we'll take and then we'll move to action.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, we do have Emma De La Rosa from Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability who has requested to address the board on item 15 on the consent agenda. Ms. De La Rosa, if you would unmute your phone by pressing star six, you may address the board.
Are you there, Ms. De La Rosa? We cannot hear you.
Good morning, Kern County Board of Supervisors. This is Emma De La Rosa again with Leadership Council. I wanted to bring up, I wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to speak every Tuesday and express that we're glad to see that the assistance will increase to $10,000 and that a wider net for the, a wider net of the community will not be eligible to apply. We're very glad to hear that. And I also want to thank Stephen Pellet from the Housing Authority for his willingness to work with community organizations on the implementation of this program. With that said, I also think it's very important to mention that regardless of how much money can be provided to the community, if there are cumbersome requirements to apply, the money will not be fully spent by the end of December, which is our deadline to utilize CARES funds. I have talked to many community members who are seeking funds for housing assistance and have referred them to 211 and the Housing Authority to apply for the rental mortgage assistance programs. However, I have consistently received feedback from the community indicating that their landlords are not willing to provide WNI information or simply not willing to collaborate to provide any of the supplemented, any of the required documents to the housing authority. I know that the Housing Authority has also expanded the program to allow landlords to seek funds for their tenants, which is a great addition. However, this still puts the tenant at the mercy of their landlord. And one would like to believe, right, that landlords would want to benefit from this program? However, with AB 3088 landlords can be positioned to evict their tenants starting next year, even though as our outreach has indicated landlords are not providing tenants with notices or declaration forms as required by AB 3088. So, you know, this will lead to the perfect recipe for evictions and inevitably an increase in homelessness for our county. For this reason, I'm asking the Board of Supervisors to support a implementation of this program with less cumbersome requirements to apply for the housing assistance to ensure that your community members and landlords alike benefit from this program. Kern County already has a huge homelessness issue and it will only become worse if the county does not take preventive measures to ensure people are not evicted. So lastly, I wanted to bring up that, again, the deadline to spend the CARES fund is in December, and we would like to know what the county's plan is regarding...
From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Okay, board to reconvene. Good morning, Madam Clerk. Would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Gleason.
Yeah.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggard.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Thank you. Supervisor Perez.
Here, thank you. Supervisor Couch is still under quarantine, so he will be participating by teleconference today. Welcome Supervisor Couch, we can hear you and we heard you in the roll call.
Thank you.
Good morning to staff and of course Kern County. Welcome to the Tuesday, November 17, 2020, Meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We will begin today's meeting with a flag salute led by our very own Supervisor Mike Maggard. Following the flag salute, please remain standing for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer.
Salute. Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As we do every Tuesday and is usually a highlight of our board session, Mr. Nick Cole, Director of Animal Services, will come out with our precious little pet of the week. Oh my goodness, who do you have there?
Good morning. I have Lucy. Lucy's about a two-year-old. Chihuahua, long-haired chihuahua mix. She's probably got a few other breeds in her too, but. Our Chief County Counsel spent some time with her this morning. She's a super sweet little girl.
How old?
She's a little over two years old. She's not getting much bigger than this, but she's very reserved, very relaxed. We were just saying how anxiety-ridden some of the shelter dogs are, and she's a good example of that. We're trying to get her just to relax and come out of her shell, but she's going to make somebody a really good family pet. I'm sure her personality will come through when she gets adopted.
Wow. It is, she is gorgeous and she reminds me so much of my sister's dog. Oh my gosh, almost identical, so a beautiful, light eyes too. What a gorgeous, gorgeous baby. She will make somebody a very warm and full home.
Her eyes match her coat.
I know. It's, she's gorgeous, wow. Good luck Lucy, we wish you the best. A good holiday season is coming for you, is my prediction, Kathy Kraus. Thank you, Mr. Cole. The County of Kern has provided notice that as a result of the declared federal, state, and local emergencies due to the COVID-19 pandemic and in light of the Governor's order, this Board of Supervisors meeting is not physically open to the public. Testimony and general public comment can be given through email or telephone to the Clerk at the Board prior to today's meeting, and live comments through teleconference will be heard during the meeting. We will begin by considering the consent agenda. All items listed with a capital C, capital A above the item listed are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be conducted, excuse me, considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item or items on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken on consent. A member of the Board may remove any item from consent and it will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the Board concerning the item before action is taken. A member of the public may also comment on any closed-session item. So let's move to our consent matters. Again, they're listed with a C and C-A for consent agenda. Begin on page two, items one through seven. Page three, items three through 13 and item 15. I'm sorry, on page three, items 10, okay, items 10 through 13, excuse me, and item 15. On page four, items 16 and 18 through 24. 16, excuse me, and 18 through 24. And on page five, items 25 and 26. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes ma'am.
Three's a charm, I guess, thank you. Gentlemen, your wishes on consent? Do we have comment? Okay, first public comment we'll take and then we'll move to action.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, we do have Emma De La Rosa from Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability who has requested to address the Board on item 15 on the consent agenda. Ms. De La Rosa, if you would unmute your phone by pressing star six, you may address the Board.
Are you there, Ms. De La Rosa? We cannot hear you.
Good morning, Kern County Board of Supervisors. This is Emma De La Rosa again with Leadership Council. I wanted to bring up, I wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to speak every Tuesday and express that we're glad to see that the assistance will increase to $10,000 and that a wider net for the, a wider net of the community will not be eligible to apply. We're very glad to hear that. And I also want to thank Stephen Pellet from the Housing Authority for his willingness to work with community organizations on the implementation of this program. With that said, I also think it's very important to mention that regardless of how much money can be provided to the community, if there are cumbersome requirements to apply, the money will not be fully spent by the end of December, which is our deadline to utilize CARES funds. I have talked to many community members who are seeking funds for housing assistance and have referred them to 211 and the Housing Authority to apply for the rental mortgage assistance programs. However, I have consistently received feedback from the community indicating that their landlords are not willing to provide WNI information or simply not willing to collaborate to provide any of the supplemented, any of the required documents to the Housing Authority. I know that the Housing Authority has also expanded the program to allow landlords to seek funds for their tenants, which is a great addition. However, this still puts the tenant at the mercy of their landlord. And one would like to believe, right, that landlords would want to benefit from this program? However, with AB 3088 landlords can be positioned to evict their tenants starting next year, even though as our outreach has indicated landlords are not providing tenants with notices or declaration forms as required by AB 3088. So, you know, this will lead to the perfect recipe for evictions and inevitably an increase in homelessness for our county. For this reason, I'm asking the Board of Supervisors to support a implementation of this program with less cumbersome requirements to apply for the housing assistance to ensure that your community members and landlords alike benefit from this program. Kern County already has a huge homelessness issue and it will only become worse if the county does not take preventive measures to ensure people are not evicted. So lastly, I wanted to bring up that, again, the deadline to spend the CARES funds is in December, and we would like to know what the county's plan is regarding dispersing these CARES funds and how they're going to be distributed, how are they going to, how are they going to be spent by the end of December. So I respectfully request an answer or discussion from the Board during today's session, or I also welcome the opportunity to discuss this matter with you in private. Thank you very much.
So Kathy, was that a consent matter?
Yes, it is on the consent agenda under the County Administrative Office.
Okay. Ryan, what is your pleasure? Do you want to address the concerns now before we do consent, or should we pull it from the consent calendar? You heard the caller and that sounds like a lengthy, complicated conversation perhaps, but I want to address those concerns as we can this morning.
The Madam Chair, members of the Board, I'm happy to take a shot. I appreciate the callers thanking, thanking us for bringing this item and the, what I believe is the utility of it, and we believe it'll be effective in funding this program. Our concerns about the CARES Act money, which is currently scheduled to run out at the end of the year, we share those concerns, as do every other city and county and state government in the United States. The Congress is in what is widely known as a lame duck session currently. The, they have to pass a, some sort of a spending plan to fund the federal government prior to, I think, December 11th, mid-December. They usually, they typically in years past have done this. This is to avoid a government shutdown. As you all know, we've had those before. Typically, they pass what's called a continuing resolution, which continues to fund the government at current levels, all departments and everything, as kind of a stopgap measure, but both parties have agreed to do, that they would like to see an omnibus spending bill get done. The, they've got about 14 or 15 days to do this. They're going to, they're supposed to be off for the Thanksgiving holiday next week. They'll be back, so it's, they've got a tight timeline. In the context of all of that, I think there is agreement by both parties that are there in Washington that some sort of an additional stimulus package needs to be passed, although there's wide disagreement over the size and scope of that package. And so with all of that said, we are concerned about CARES Act money being ending sunsetting essentially at the end of the year. As you know, to the caller's point about how that's being spent, well, the last four or five months, we've pretty much laid that out in a very public way, how your board has chosen to spend that. Obviously, this particular program on housing and rental assistance is one aspect of that. There are many, many others. We, your board pumped $30 million into the local economy through a forgivable loan program. We're funding nonprofit agencies. There are a variety of food assistance and other types of assistance that are being funded. Obviously, we have our own expenses related to COVID, whether it's through the Public Health Department and all of the work that they're doing, law enforcement, fire services, et cetera. All of that is supported in some measure by this, this funding, just as is the, our hospital capacity to address that and the staffing issues related to hospital capacity. Your board, I think smartly, set aside several millions of dollars to fund, to bring in nurses, to address the staffing issue that we had a couple of months ago. That program stays in place. We obviously have money set aside for our alternative care site at the fairgrounds, which stands ready to go in a 48-hour turnaround if needed. I think all of those things are important to mention in the context of the surge that is happening around the country and here in the state of California, and whether or not that those, those particular efforts are going to be needed or fully utilized. So all of that CARES Act money is dedicated to particular things, but we share the caller's concerns about the fact that this money goes away. We think a very simple action, if nothing else is done on CARES Act or COVID, nothing else is done by the Congress, the simple extension of the deadline that is, has been placed on states and local governments to spend this money would be a very, very good, really simple thing that can be done. It gives us some incredible additional time, we think, that could be helpful in dealing with and managing COVID here in our community and paying for the things that we need to get, get paid. We're on record through the California State Association of Counties, obviously the National Association of Counties. There are other stakeholder groups that are, that are lobbying the Congress to get this done. So with all of that said, again, we share the concerns. We, we're hopeful that something gets done before the end of the year, at the very least to extend this, to extend the time we have to spend this money. And additionally, any additional economic assistance certainly, considering the plight of local governments like Kern County and others across the, across the country, I think would be a prudent step in the right direction, given, given the fact, again, that we're dealing with another surge in our country with this incredible virus that we're dealing with. So I hope that answers the concerns and some of your questions that you might have.
Ryan, that's very helpful, thank you. Given the fact that time is of the essence on this particular matter, I'm not inclined to pull it or have a huge discussion about qualifications. We really need to move on it, but those are always good questions and good things to know, Ryan, as the community gives us feedback, right, about how things are actually playing out in real life. So we appreciate that. Always incorporate and take it serious, so thank you for your interest. Do we have any other public comment?
No other public comment on any consent agenda items, so we're ready to approve the consent agenda.
Excellent. Gentlemen.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, please cast your votes.
Madam Chair, we'll need to do a roll call vote since Supervisor Couch is video conferencing in, so to approve the consent agenda, Supervisor Gleason.
Aye.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Aye.
Supervisor Maggard.
Aye.
Supervisor Couch.
Yes.
And Supervisor Perez.
Yes.
All ayes.
Thank you very much. I want to move to Board Member announcements or reports. And Mick, I forgot last week to thank you for your service and acknowledge, you know, the incredible role that you have played in this community and beyond and around the world frankly. I want to thank you for your service, wish you, I hope you had a great Veterans Day. I meant to say last Tuesday, but more importantly, today is your birthday.
Oh.
So, so I know you're mad at me, but happy birthday Mick. You are a class act and a consummate gentleman. So hats off to you Mick.
I can't tell you how much I appreciate you saying that. Thank you very much.
Happy birthday to you Mick.
Thanks.
Okay. Gentlemen, we are, I know you have Supervisors Maggard and Scrivner for our ad hoc committee, but first, we will manage item eight, yeah, public presentations. Okay, excuse me, I got carried away with Mick Gleason's birthday. Public presentations. Madam Clerk.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, we have a voice message that we're going to play at this time. This voice message is from Cindy Jocelyn, and she is, has a recommendation related to the posting of COVID test sites on a daily basis. So we will first play her message.
My name is Cindy Jocelyn, and I am just going to give a suggestion about the COVID testing, which is if you would just publicize every day in the newspaper different sites where we could go, I'm sure that you'd get a big turnout. I don't know where I'm supposed to go for a COVID test. If you just publicize it, you'd get a lot of people going. Okay, that's my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we also have two callers on the line that would like to address your Board under public presentations. The first caller, I'm sorry, we only have one caller on the line. Mr. Fleuhart, David Fleuhart is on the line, ready to address your Board. Mr. Fleuhart, if you would unmute your phone by pressing star six, you have two minutes to address the Board.
Okay, is he there? Hello, are you there?
We're here, we can hear you, Mr. Fleuhart. Can you hear us?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Board. This is David Fleuhart, Havelaw, First District, and I know a couple of weeks ago I talked at the meeting and was asking about when the meetings would open up and whatnot, so you could come in person, and, well, that's obviously a squash question now. But what I, I also want to say today is that I remember for years I've been saying that without a karma, weed, marijuana, nothing's going to succeed. It's almost not scientific, it's more religious, and you look at the last page of the Bible, it specifically says, "Believe in the tree or you heal the nations." Anyways, so it's, it's coming around back and forth, and I've been trying to tell you this for years and years and years, and I've done it in letters and personal visits and comic strips and crossword puzzles and code puzzles, and I don't know. Anyways, heck, I remember making you guys a video about the CAO's office and telling the future CAO that without karma, weed, marijuana, it's just not going to work. And I, I don't know, I guess it was a pretty humorous and entertaining video, but here we are, and you know, I just wanted to reiterate once again, you guys ought to look at that concept and appreciate all you guys do and, and you know, best to you, and hopefully, hopefully we can work something out. Okay, I guess that's it. I hope you all have a good day, and that's it. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Fleuhart.
Always nice to hear from you. What else do we have, Kathy?
That concludes public comment.
Okay. Then we will move on from public presentations, on to Board Member announcements, number nine, and we're going to begin with Matt Constantine, a Director of Public Health, who just has oodles of exciting and good news for us as this pandemic continues to send us on the roller coaster of our lives. I appreciate you, and you know, given the surge across the country, I know Kern County is trapped in that reality, and I again appreciate you, Matt. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. So today at 10:00, we will announce 222 new cases on our dashboard, and fortunately, no additional deaths. The state uncharacteristically released information yesterday, on Monday instead of today. In that release, they've indicated that our case rate is 16.1 and our unadjusted case rate, or excuse me, our adjusted case rate is 17.9. Again, for reference, to stay out of the purple, we have to be below seven. Those numbers are very high. Our testing positivity is at 8%, and the testing positivity in our health equity census tracts is 8.4%. So all those numbers are up across the board. As of November 16th, our testing rate has improved though. It is up to 234, so that's again averaged over seven days per 100,000. That's higher than it's been in recent time. Unfortunately though, we are compared against the state median that also increased to 271. So we are around 680 tests per day short to alleviate that adjustment factor. So based on this news, the state has indicated that Kern County, along with 40 other counties, are, is moving into the purple territory. So there's 41 counties that are either previously in the purple or are moving with us into the purple, so the majority of the state. So what that means for us locally, of course, is that that impacts our local businesses. So restaurants are no longer allowed to do indoor seating, movie theaters, gyms are not allowed to be indoors, churches are not allowed to be indoors, retail is down to 25%.
No church operation at all indoors?
Just indoor, ma'am, just indoor.
Just outdoor?
They can do outdoor services.
But nothing inside?
Nothing inside.
Thank you.
No, ma'am. So those are, those are changes that are effective today, and it's important to note that because the state has made changes to their, their tiered system. They're calling this the emergency break provision, which was in the original document, but in that, it allows the state to make some immediate changes if they see cases surging. So typically, we are given three days to inform our local businesses about the changes and, from the state. They've now changed that to a day. So the changes that were announced on Monday are effective today, which makes it very difficult for our local businesses to make some quick changes. They've also indicated that although it doesn't affect us today, counties, if they fail the metrics for a week, they get moved to the more restrictive tier instead of the previous two weeks. Fortunately for us, that doesn't apply because this is our two-week mark, but that may affect us in the future. They've also indicated some discussion about freezing the counties now that are in purple to stay in purple for weeks or longer. In other words, there's going to be discussion this week about if, for whatever reason, the county was to do better on their metrics, the state as a whole is going to hold us at that more restrictive purple tier until the Governor has indicated that we can move out of it. We don't have details yet, but that's part of the discussion about freezing us in our current location. There have been some discussions from the state and the California Department of Public Health about increased masking guidance, making it stronger, the language in the standalone document about statewide masking, and they've also indicated that they are going to change some of the existing industry sector guidance to be stronger on masking. So for example, in restaurants, they're going to come out stronger that your mask can only be off while, while you're eating, it needs to be on at all other times. They're going to change the school guidance document to further strengthen the masking requirements, that previously there was an exemption for younger children, that appears to be going away. As you saw too, they have issued a travel advisory, asking anybody that's traveling into California to quarantine for 14 days. There was discussion too about posting occupancy on some of these businesses that have limitations on the amount of a business, for example, retail, that has yet to come out. And there, there was some general discussion about the potential of a advisory curfew. There's no details there, but there was quite a bit of discussion over the weekend about the state evaluating an advisory curfew at 9:00 or 10:00 p.m. So those changes are coming. We expect more, we heard a little bit yesterday from the Governor, we expect more this week to be issued, but the bottom line is we are seeing increasing cases in Kern. Our hospitals are still doing well, however, we have seen an increase in hospitalization. As the Governor says, there's about a three-week delay between when we actually see increased cases and when we start to see cases in our hospitals. We're at about two weeks at that three-week timeframe, so we do expect our hospitals to become more busy. On average, about 10% of cases in Kern are hospitalized and 3% are put in the ICU. We expect those numbers, those daily numbers that we track, to increase. There is some good news, there is a new therapeutic that is being issued by the state. Kern County received 95 doses of this new therapeutic that is designed to help those that have early symptoms of COVID-19. It's not meant for those that are hospitalized, but those that are seeking care and need additional help. It shortens the duration and the severity of the symptoms. And the vaccine development continues to progress. We hear again more good news about the second vaccine being very effective, that's an effectiveness greater than most vaccines, and we are planning aggressively at how that will be deployed here. We're following federal and state guidance, but we're not waiting. We've got the plan in place. We met with the hospital CEOs last week so that they are ready to go. There's more work to be, to come, we don't have dates yet, but once that is released, we're going to be ready to go. And then finally, this is an important week for us at Public Health. We have been addressing our health equity metric with a lot of effort, so this week, today alone, we have boots on the ground. We have hired people, our first team is in place, they're actually in Delano this morning, they're going door-to-door. place. They're actually in Delano this morning. They're going door-to-door. They have flyers. They have informational brochures. They have sent out the Ready Kern or Reverse 911 System that the fire department manages. We have a testing site that will be set up on Thursday in those neighborhoods. So we're informing people of the availability and the importance of testing. It's a start. Our envision is to have many, many more teams ready to go and choreographed on their location and where they work so that we can get the messages out in advance, the direct mailings out in advance, and then follow it up with one of those testing sites afterwards. So we have 35 census tracts. Those are our targets. We're starting on the first one. We're going to loop back around as we need to. And we're going to look at live data to make sure what is the testing rates, positivity rates in those census tract, and focus on those that are most important with those highest rates. So, Madam Chair, that concludes my comments.
Matt, thank you for a succinct and thorough presentation. Thank you for your workout in Delano. It sounds like you guys have a good handle on rolling out a program that is, that sounds sophisticated and accountable. So, thank you. I appreciate that update. I'm sorry about the numbers across the country. We have worked so hard. This is, of course, devastating news. This morning, my dad's texting me about church. They've just sort of gotten back to normal. It's just so heartbreaking. It is just so heartbreaking. So, thank you. I'm going to ask my colleagues who serve on our ad hoc committee, Mr. Supervisor, excuse me, Supervisors Maggard and Scrivner, who do our ad hoc committee, and I'm going to ask, they give us an update, and of course, they'll engage you. Supervisor Maggard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Constantine, thank you for your report to us this morning. I'd like to ask you to expand on a few of the topics that are, that you mentioned. Let's talk first about the court ruling that recently occurred. There was a challenge to the governor's ability to impose all of these edicts that he has done. And one interesting nuance of this is that the curfew that he's talking about now is suggested, not a requirement. So there's some confusion in the public, some concern over that, actually, rather than confusion. Can you give us any clarification of that court ruling and what the implications and what it might mean going forward?
So Supervisor Maggard through the chair. I'd like to defer to county counsel to perhaps provide some insight.
Certainly.
Welcome.
Thank you. Supervisor Maggard through the chair. I believe you're referring to the lawsuit that's name is Gallagher versus Newsom, that stems from a Superior Court action in Sutter County, where on Friday afternoon, the Sutter Court judge issued a tentative ruling that then became her final ruling as of yesterday. The challenge that was made was to the governor's ability to issue executive orders that amend statutes or make new statutes. And the court ruled this all has to do with his authority under the California Emergency Services Act. And the C E S A, or California Emergency Service Act, allows a governor during a state of emergency to issue orders and regulations and to suspend certain statutes. And then the court held that the plain and unambiguous language of C E S A does not permit the governor to amend statutes or make new statutes. And the actual ruling in the case addressed an executive order that he made related to the election that was held November 3rd, and the use of barcodes in some of the Voters' Choice Act counties. So the Sutter County's court's decision is issued an injunction that precludes the governor from exercising any power under the California Emergency Service Act, which amends, alters, or changes existing statutory law or makes new statutory law or legislative policy. That has to do with actions, executive orders, that have been issued under the California Emergency Services Act, not orders that have been issued under Health and Safety Code and those that have been made by the public health officer. So we get deep into, deep into the, like, most legal things. There's many components of it. As of late yesterday afternoon, the governor's office did file in the Third District Court of Appeal, a petition for a writ, asking that the appellate court set aside the order of the Superior Court. And accompanied that writ petition is an application for a stay of the enforcement of the injunction. I do not know when those matters will be heard, but typically, a writ, and then the, and it's like an emergency action for a stay, will be heard very, very quickly. So I'd say within, well, I would say within a few days to a week or so, the Third District Court of Appeal will consider the governor's petition. There are, there are some uncertainties as a result of the Sutter County decision. It is unclear from the face of that opinion right now, what the effect that that court order has on existing executive orders. And it does not address executive orders or portions of executive orders that suspend a state law. And to the extent that the governor's executive orders have been approved by the legislature via subsequent legislation, they are most likely not affected by that order.
I know you tried to clarify that extensively, but...
Sorry.
Yeah. So, nice try. But tell us a little bit more. Does this mean that he can continue, and we, and businesses and citizens must continue to follow the orders that he has laid down in so many different areas? Or what's the consequence of that?
So my understanding is that the closures and the tiered system and the blueprint, the blueprint for California, is premised on Health and Safety Code authorizations, not the California Emergency Service Act. And those orders do remain in effect.
So did the case that was before, this is state court, not federal, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So was the case that was before the state court, was it on point about whether or not it should affect Health and Safety? Or was it only specific to those other areas? So did the judge say, you know, kind of sustain the governor? Or did they just not speak to it because it wasn't asked?
It was not asked. It's a narrow ruling.
It's my understanding that many other lawsuits are in the pipeline. Are you, can you give us any thought about that?
Yes. Pull that up. I left that in my office. Yes, there are quite a few lawsuits that are making their way through the different courts within California. I can, and with a little bit of time, I can pull up a summary that I've been keeping of those. This is the first one. Other ones are scheduled for trial or argument within the next few weeks. But this is the first one that has reached this level.
In the same court, before the same judge, or is that not necessarily the case?
No, there's, I know there's one pending in Fresno. Early on, there were some in Riverside related to church openings. Like I said, I can, I can find that summary.
Okay, I think that would be helpful to us. There is discussion in our community, as we speak, of a number of restaurants coming together and filing a suit about these matters. And that should apply to them. So it'll be interesting to see how these come forward. Do you know if any of these cases address the Health and Safety premise upon which the governor is basing many of his edicts to us?
I imagine they do.
They do? Okay. Well, yeah, please keep us posted on that. Mr. Constantine, may I ask you a few more questions? Thank you, Ms. Razan. So tell us a little bit more about the public outreach. That's exciting that we have people in the field. And how much more expansive do you think that will become?
Supervisor Maggard through the chair. So this first team is being deployed this morning. We have envisioned up to 40 different members making those, those house calls, broken up into multiple teams. So we are actually hiring more individuals as we speak. And they go through a quick training process about COVID, about safety, and sort of what we want them to do. So our hope is it quickly grows. The direct mailings and the information that's left if somebody's not home, the door hangers, has all been created and is being reproduced. It's not complete yet. We have P P E that's available. We have the ability for an elevated discussion. If there's more of a health-related or medical-related discussion, we have that ability to address. So this, this is boots on the ground. It's our efforts to immediately make changes to address some of the myths that we've heard out there about some of the concerns about testing. And we want to adapt. As we've learned more, we need to adapt the services that we provide and where and how we provide them. So we're there to listen also. But it's so far, today's day one. But we envision this is going to go very well.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Constantine, about that. With regard to the implications of moving back into the purple tier, you have addressed some industries, like restaurants you mentioned, that are affected by this. What industries or sectors are not affected by the change from red to purple?
So it is important to note that personal care, nails, salons, hair salons, barber shops are now excluded from that structure. So they are allowed to remain open as long as they follow those guidance documents, masking, cleaning, distancing as best they can. For the majority of other places, it impacts. So although we were restrictive in the red tier, allowing a few businesses to open up, this now reverts back. And it really affects most businesses. If you're not in one of those preset categories, then the retail facilities, you are affected. So before, you could, you could have a certain number of people. And now, we went from 50%, for example, in the red tier, to 25% occupancy in the purple tier.
So what does it mean for schools?
So schools, schools are not directly affected today, based on this movement. I was on, again, another call this morning with the superintendents of the large schools and the superintendent of schools. The, this movement back into purple does not affect schools that have chosen to open as we were in the red tier. However, if a individual school site intended to open but didn't, or chose to just not open at all, in this red tier, as we moved back to purple, they can't open.
Cannot.
Cannot, until we move back to red. So if they didn't open, they have to hold until we get back into the red.
So I realize this is an issue that parents should take up with their school, school site, principal, school district, county superintendent of schools, you know, as they move up the ladder and how they ask their questions and who they appeal to. But what does it mean for, for example, Horace Mann School, I read in the paper, which is, happens to be at the very edge of my district. Horace Mann School is closing. But what does that mean for that school? And may it reopen? And can you explain any of that for parents?
Absolutely. And as anticipated, when schools reopened, we expected to see some small number of cases. The state asked each school to develop a plan. And it was an action plan on how to encourage masking and distancing. But more importantly, it had a component that if there were positive cases, they were to have a plan in place. And the state requires schools that reach a 5% positivity rate, if you take all students and all staff together. If it's more than 5%, the state asks the school to put together a plan that would require the closure of the school for 14 days. To Horace Mann's credit, and to the Bakersfield City School District's credit, and the superintendent doc, he was on top of this and watched it very carefully. And we've been in contact for a week. When it hit 5%, he notified us and notified us of the intent to close. That is how the plan is designed. It protects other kids from the potential exposure on campus. Once they reach that 14-day, they are allowed to reassess and then reopen, regardless of the current stats in the county. So the purple tier does not affect their ability, but more importantly, those statistics or the positivity in that school affects the reopening.
So it's very possible, very likely that, is this correct, very likely that Horace Mann will once again open and those parents will have school with their children?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Alsop, could you talk to us a little bit about the funding and the spending deadline that's there? You mentioned it earlier when you responded to the assistance we're trying to give to homeowners and tenants and landlords. But, you know, the goal of the legislation was that we would have a certain amount of money and that we will have, would have spent it all by December 31st. And we have, we are on track, I think, to spend most, if not all of it, by December 31st. But there are certain aspects of it that it would be helpful for us to be able to hold over. And one of those specifically has to do with our ability to hire and entice traveling nurses to come here to staff our ICU beds, for example. So can you give us any insight into what we're doing about that and what, how we're seeking to have the latitude we need to manage that effectively?
Sure. Supervisor Maggard through the chair, members of the board. I, you know, if we had not received the Federal CARES Act funding that we did, and there was no assistance that was being provided and funneled into the county by the federal government or to the state and then to the county, we would be drawing down our reserves to pay for everything that we've done, down to zero. That's the situation that we would be in. We would have struggled to do any number of things that your board has done, whether, you know, it was to assist certain communities of folks or the small business community, any number of things that we've done. Mr. Zerfus will present in the first agenda item this morning, a couple of other things that we're proposing to do. Those are added to the list. But the bottom line is, is that more time to contemplate and manage that money and to distribute it in ways that are effective in dealing with the virus's spread and managing it would be helpful, given the fact that the near-term future is very uncertain, that we could be in a situation where we could see our hospitalization rates, which I believe is probably the most important, most critical thing that we're paying attention to here locally, seeing our hospital rates increase and getting to a situation where we're struggling to, with that capacity, lack of capacity, and the ability to treat people not only with COVID, but any number of other things, flu-related, car accidents or whatever it may be. So the more time that we have with the money that we have is helpful. And I believe, and as others do, that a simple extension of that deadline would be very, very helpful. It wouldn't have to come with any more printing of any money or check writing by the federal government. It would simply be extending the deadline, giving us more time. So that's really the issue. But again, when this money runs out, so too does our ability and your board's ability to, in large measure, do the kinds of things that you've been doing over the past five months to assist communities in our community in dealing with this and managing through it. So it is critical that this deadline get extended. And hopefully, that's something that will be achieved here in the next 14 or 15 days by the Congress. If they're going to do an omnibus spending bill, let's hope that that's part of it, at the very least. And I hope that answers your question, Supervisor.
Yeah, thank you. We are, are we not lending our voices to many, many others who are beseeching the federal government to cooperate with us in that regard?
Yes, sir. We are.
Okay, thank you. One more thing, Mr. Constantine, and then I'll turn it over to Supervisor Scrivner. With regard to flu shots, are people, how's that going? And are they, does it appear that the public is taking that seriously? And if not, what can we do to help?
Yes, sir. As we promote each year, flu shots are available. They're recommended, not only through Public Health, but through all of our providers and even our local drugstores. So that seems to be going fairly well. We've done a number of clinics. So yes, I think it's going well.
What is the, generally speaking, it varies year by year, but what is the general efficacy of a flu shot? but what is the general efficacy of a flu shot?
So I don't have the statistics in front of me, but it is far below 90%, what we're seeing for the potential COVID vaccine. Somewhere between 30 and 50% wouldn't be unusual. But I don't have the current statistics.
Wow. So although politics clouds the discussion around vaccinations and whether or not they're safe and whether or not people should participate, it isn't extraordinary news that this might be so effective when we spend so much time on flu vaccinations and they're only half as effective probably as these new ones might end up being?
Absolutely. And as long as there's a willingness for the public to obtain the vaccine, this could significantly change how we approach COVID-19 in 2021.
Very good. And are we endeavoring to make sure that the infrastructure's in place to distribute this, all the places it needs to be distributed?
Yes, sir. So unlike some of the other vaccines that the state and federal government have released, this vaccine will be distributed directly to those providers that have registered in advance and obtained that approval. And then we will help prioritize groups according to state guidance on who should get it first, healthcare providers, first responders, and so forth. So yes, this is going to be a better system in place because it gets the vaccine out to more than just public health. It puts it in the hands of many of our local doctors.
One last thing, and then I'll turn it over to my colleague Supervisor Scrivner. With regard to the money that we have left, Mr. Alsop, as we approach the end of the year, just in the next few weeks, if it appears that we do have any surplus funds, I would urge us to think about spending those surplus funds, helping to help those businesses survive that are being once again forced to shut down. It is, not only is it emotionally devastating, but it is extraordinarily difficult for them financially to spend all this money to prepare and then have those expenses stranded and squandered. So if there is any other money that we can put back into the Kern CARES loan program, that would be a very helpful thing, I think, to make sure people have a job to return to. I went on a bit there, but I want to turn this over to my colleague Supervisor Scrivner.
Thank you. Madam Chair, if I may, I see the council's punched in. I don't know. Did you want to say something specific to any of Supervisor Maggard's remarks? Or shall I do?
Supervisor Scrivner. Thank you, Zach, for that. I appreciate that.
Yeah, Supervisor Scrivner through the chair. Yes, Madam Chair, if it's all right, I've got a little bit of information about the number of lawsuits that have been filed and the status of some of them.
Thank you. Zach, how do you feel about that?
I'm happy to let counsel address that.
Thank you, sir.
Going on. Thanks.
By my calculations, there's been a total of 43 suits filed against Governor Newsom since the start of this pandemic. 19 remain pending. 18 have been dismissed. Six ruled in favor of Governor Newsom. It's a bit of a variety. Looks like most of them are in federal court, although it's pretty close to a split between state and federal court actions. There are at least five of the cases that have been filed by church or church members alleging violations of freedom of speech and rights to assembly. There's also a couple of cases that have been filed by gyms, also alleging violations of free speech and rights to assembly. Some cases filed by restaurants and people in the hospitality business alleging that the public health orders, so that's exactly the question that you asked, public health orders violate their constitutional rights and constitutes a taking under the Fifth Amendment. There's a couple of cases that have been filed by parents alleging that the governor's public health orders violate their children's right to receive education. So there are quite a variety, but challenging both the California Emergency Services Act as well as the public health orders.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Counsel. Okay. Mr. Constantine, I have a few questions for you. A lot of the things I wanted to ask about have been covered, so I appreciate your thoroughness and also that of Supervisor Maggard. In regard to the hospitalization rates, I agree with Mr. Alsop that that is, if not the most, one of the most important indicators as far as our community's ability to respond to the virus. And so you talked about our hospital rates over the course of the last several weeks have been very good, very low, the lowest that we'd seen maybe since this all started. But now we're starting to see them creep up a bit. And so if you look at where our case rate was last week when you reported, and I don't have my notes in front of me, but it was ballpark where I think we were around eight or nine with the adjustment. And so now we're up to 16.1 and then 17.9 as far as they adjusted. And I may be a little off on those numbers, but there's been quite an increase, even between last week when we were not meeting that particular metric to this week. And so can we extrapolate from a doubling in our case rate, basically, that we may see a doubling in our hospitalization rates? Or are these new therapeutics that have come online maybe mitigating that to some extent, how serious the cases become? And I think that you said that there's a two to a three-week lag as far as how hospitalizations respond when you see case rate increase. So could you help us to drill down on that a little bit more, where we may have a better idea if our hospital capacity is becoming a problem or not? And I know you meet weekly with the hospital CEOs over this.
Yes, sir. Supervisor Scrivner through the chair. So we don't have a lot of history with this virus. We watched with interest in the summer months, especially July, where we saw significant increases. And then it slowly subsided as we went into August. So it lasted a short period of time, but it ramped way up, sort of unexpectedly ramped way up. So now we're watching this next wave of cases. We're watching what's happening in the rest of the country. We've watched how healthcare systems in some states have been inundated. And that gets us a little worried. So what matters is not only how many cases, the peak, and we don't know where that is, but the duration of that peak. Because we can handle a peak, but as hospitals have to care for those that are sick and there's a three-week delay, and these individuals don't just go in for a day, you're hospitalized for weeks, if not longer. So the longer it goes in, the more cumulative cases they have to manage. And that becomes the concern. So I think it's too early to try to extrapolate with just two data points. But I think we're wise to be cautious. We are staffing up. We are bringing in more people. We are reassigning work. We are not going to be caught flat-footed in case we need to respond. With 222 cases that we reported today, there's about four contacts per case. So I have eight or nine or 1,000 cases I have to call today, let alone that there were 300 yesterday. So it's a little concerning to us how quickly we're moving upwards. I think we need to be careful. And I think we need to watch what's happening because we could quickly become affected like we've watched in Texas and the Midwest states, where there's just no bed space available. I mean, today we have, excuse me, as of November 15th, the hospitals are reporting to the state that they have 889 beds available. That's a lot. They have 59 ICU beds available. We have 78, though, that are now hospitalized with COVID symptoms, and 17 that are hospitalized in the ICU because of COVID. Those numbers ticked up. More than ticked up. They increased. That's a little concerning to us. But you're right to be careful. We don't know what the future holds.
And we know we're moving into flu season, what's traditionally flu season. I frankly am curious to see what is actually going to happen with flu season because I think people are a lot more serious about viral spread and trying to prevent it. And so I think apparently COVID is a lot more contagious than the traditional flu, if, you know, depending on who you talk to. But I think it is going to be interesting to see how many flu cases we actually have, you know, because all of us are being so conscious about, you know, about infections. The contract we have with the traveling nurses, Mr. Alsop or Constantine, I'm not sure which one of you can address this, but we have the bulk of the funding that we set aside for that still in a reserve. I think, what was it originally, 12 million? And have we spent, I'm not, sorry, I'm not aware exactly how much we've spent thus far on it, if any.
So Supervisor Scrivner through the chair. The hospitals have taken advantage, to some limited degree, the availability of funding for those traveling ICU nurses. Kern Medical has, I think, about 14 that are onsite and working. We do allow them to reallocate those nurses if there's not a need in those ICU COVID cases. Some of the other hospitals have a few, but it's not been utilized to its full extent. As this increases, I think we're poised well to bring in more. And the hospitals are always tracking that very carefully. And we will likely see their dependence on these traveling nurses more as the cases increase.
We were wise to plan ahead.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And get those contracts in place. Good. Thank you. The, just very quickly on the schools. Now, if I remember correctly, when we were in purple before, there was a waiver process that went through your office into the state. Has that been eliminated now? Once we went into red, the waiver was no longer necessary. But now what happens as far as that's concerned?
So you're exactly right. There was two processes, a waiver process and a cohort guidance that allowed schools to operate within that purple tier. Most schools then opened when we were in the red tier. There's a few that chose not to or didn't get to it yet. Some schools decided to wait a few months to their benefit. They were careful. And the concern is now they're getting penalized because they didn't just jump and open up full-scale.
Which we tried to make them all aware of, that that could be a possibility.
We did. We did. So it's unclear to us today, as we moved into purple yesterday, if the waiver process still exists. As the governor is really clamped down and is applying that emergency brake, we're concerned that that avenue isn't valid. But we don't know yet. And as they make more changes this week, we're not sure. But it's a valid question that we should have an answer to.
Thank you. Mr. Alsop, did you get a number on how much we spent as far as the traveling nurses? I know that you probably were communicating with your staff to get that.
1.3 million to date.
Out of 12 that we set aside originally? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So we have the lion's share of that still available. Very good. The, I think the caller under public comments was talking about publicizing perhaps more effectively the COVID testing sites. There are probably folks that are still not knowing exactly where they are. Where are our efforts as far as that's concerned, to get the word out, where we have testing sites? I know that you mentioned with our team that's in Delano, today there's going to be a testing site available in those neighborhoods on Thursday. But can we, for the public, those that are watching, do we have a list currently? Or where can they go and find that information? Is that on your website, the public health website, Mr. Constantine?
Yes, sir. If okay, I'd like Brian to give an update. I think he has some ideas from today in particular about what to do.
Thank you.
Yeah. So that's been a very important effort, obviously, on our part. And they're a very simple and easy way for people to find out where they can get tested is simply visit our website.
So kerncounty.com?
Kerncounty.com. If they go, they wind up at Kern County Public Health. It's the same data, but it's a very quick and easy, interactive map where the locations are represented by dots. And people can find the location closest to them, the address. They can type in their address to get the closest location. So that's there. But there's a number of other ways that we're promoting, you know, via social media, obviously, our website. I think the media, the local media, has done a good job in partnering with us, whether it's been on TV or in the newspaper, talking about the different sites. Obviously, our partners, people that we're working with to, whether it's the Latino Task Force or other partners, Adventist Health, others, they're also promoting and helping promote these testing sites. But to the point of the caller earlier, we are going to be reaching out to the local newspaper and trying to work out a deal with them where we have them publish every single day on page two or three of their newspaper, all of the testing sites that are available to the public for that day, at least through the end of the year. So Californian, good news for you.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Mr. Alsop. And obviously, the availability of testing sites and folks' awareness of where and when they can go and get tested contributes directly to our testing rate. And the testing rate is what drives this arbitrary adjusted rate that the governor slapped on us and the rest of the state. A few, I guess it's been a couple, three months or so back now. But that makes a big difference. If you look at our case rate of 16.1, our adjusted rate's 17.9. So it's almost two percentage points that's affecting us right now. And so can you tell us again, I was writing down as you were talking, our current testing rate, I think you said, was 234? And that's an average over seven days per 100,000. And so the state median is 271. And so what, we're going to have an item that we're going to talk about, I think, next, to help incentivize folks to go and get tested. But that adjusted rate, that can be the difference between us moving back into red very easily. And so that's why it's important for us to continue to keep an eye on it. I don't agree with the adjustment. I think it's arbitrary. I think the governor is penalizing us for a voluntary action of people to go get tested. But the more folks that do go get tested, whether they're symptomatic or not, helps to drive up our overall testing rate, which helps us with that adjustment. Mr. Alsop, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I appreciate that, Supervisor, through the chair. I just wanted to make a comment about, you know, this environment that we're in and the effort that's being put forward by our county, particularly public health and everybody else that we're working with, our partnerships and everything. When the governor rolled out his blueprint for a safer economy, one of our frustrations was the metric that was being tied to overall testing. And the challenge that that posed, because trying to get people tested is a voluntary action in large measure. And so significant challenges. At that time, if you recall, the announcement was they were tying overall testing to the median or the average per capita testing rate across the state, which at the time was 217. And ours was about in the 150s. And our frustration was is that that metric was being tied to what we believed would be a number that we would just be chasing for all time because the call was put out to increase testing. But what I wanted to point out was today, we're testing, as Mr. Constantine pointed out, 234 people per 100,000 a day. That is from a number of 150 just so many weeks ago. So it's an example of our county pivoting, putting resources and time and effort in to achieve the metrics that are being, objectives that are being provided by the state. And here we are now at 234 a day. If you recall, the state's statewide average was 217 a day back when they called this out. So we're now above where that was. But meanwhile, overall, all other counties have been doing the same thing. And the average has gone up to 275 or whatever it is. So we're chasing and we're still in the same position that we were in many weeks ago, needing, what, 500, 600 people per day. So to your point, Supervisor Scrivner, the efforts that we're putting in to try and get more people to testing sites and doubling that effort is critical. We're going to be talking about that item in a little bit more depth today. But just to your point, I wanted to make that comment.
Thank you, Mr. Alsop. I appreciate it.
Zach, can I interject something?
Yeah, I was actually, I'm going to turn it back over you. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Constantine. Appreciate that. That's all. Madam Chair, thank you.
Zach, thank you so much. Your questions were brilliant. And really, your leadership on this stellar. Mike, thank you. Really appreciate you guys. Zach, your line of questioning, you know, was really striking. We have 900,000 people in Kern County. So for folks that are thinking about the numbers, we multiply them by nine because it is per population. It's how, in theory, you know, we remain fair about how we gauge our numbers. So we do have 900,000 people in Kern County. And I want to let the community know. So it is basically a times nine, you know. I'm not a math person, as I just exposed, Mike. I couldn't even create a sentence to sound intelligent about it. So I should have given the mic to you. So thank you, Matt, for that. So thank you, Matt, for that. Really appreciate you guys' leadership and collaboration. We're going to move along then, Kathy, unless we have other board members. Mick?
Thank you, Madam Chair, appreciate it. We're going to hear something in closed session today about a DOJ report or something, and it was, I think there was some confusion in how they addressed it in newspapers, and so I'm asking, Margot, if you'd explain, there's some concern about transparency, and I want to alleviate that, that concern immediately. Could you help us nip that in the bud, please?
Yeah, Supervisor Gleason through the chair. There was inaccurate information reported in a Bakersfield Californian article Saturday, Saturday's paper. Specifically, there was a reference to receipt of a report from Department of Justice, State Department of Justice, to the Sheriff's Office or my office, the Office of County Council. To be clear, there has been no report received. So that's, that was the, the inaccuracy. There, there is no report. Department of Justice has, has contacted me, as, as, has been reported since December of 2016, I believe it is. They have been conducting an investigation. I have had some conversations about their investigation, and based on those conversations, I believe it's necessary to brief the board, and that's why it's on closed session pursuant to the government code sections that allow such.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mick. Thank you very much. Well, we, and we can report out any relevant information later as we move through that matter. Supervisor David Couch, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. We're going to move to item number 14, which is a proposed revision to the CARES Act Relief Fund Utilization Plan to provide support to Kern County Special Districts in an amount not to exceed $2 million. Request for authorization to sign an agreement with the San Joaquin Valley Quality Cotton Growers Association to provide CARES grant in an amount not to exceed $250,000 and allocate $360,000 to, to increase COVID-19 testing, including authorization to purchase and distribute up to 12,000 in gift cards valued at $25 each. Mr. Alsop, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. I'm going to have Mr. Zervis of my office report on this item.
Madam, Madam Chair.
Hi, good morning, good to see you, Jim.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. This morning, this item has three components, as mentioned in the title. The first is to allocate $2 million to reimburse Kern County Special Districts for COVID-19 related costs. There, in Kern County, there are 88 different, unique special districts throughout our county that provide specific services to the constituents here. For example, some of those are going to, are water districts, flood districts, airport districts, recreation districts, cemetery districts, just as a few examples. There's, there's just a tremendous number of those. Most of those did not receive any kind of COVID-19 or CARES Act funding to support their operations. So they were left out of, of the federal legislation, they were not addressed by the state either as a group. Some of them may have received specific funding for their charge. So if there was a specific water funding that was distributed just to water districts, for example, they, they may have received some portion of CARES Act. But largely, as a group, they were, they were omitted from that support at the federal and state level. It's come to our attention that many of those districts have incurred substantial COVID-19 related costs, and this action would create a pool of $2 million to reimburse those special districts for any COVID-19 related costs, net of any COVID-19 related support that they may have received from another agency. So we would look at, at the, the net impact on their agency. Revenue backfill or lost revenue, making up for lost revenue is not an eligible reimbursement under this program, similar to the restrictions that are placed on the county in that regard and the cities. And so this, this would create a pool, again, to be accessed on a first come, first served basis with those special districts. This is very similar to the action your board took in setting aside funding to reimburse cities within Kern County for COVID-19 related costs and activities. This would establish a similar program to, to special districts. I, I am aware that your board has received nine letters of support from various special districts regarding this portion of this item. Additionally, Cole Carr, who is a representative for the Special Districts Association out of Sacramento, has called in and I believe would like to address your board once I'm done presenting this item. So there are, there are two other items included in this board letter. The second is to allocate up to $250,000 to mitigate financial impacts of COVID-19 specifically, or to the San Joaquin Valley Quality Cotton Growers Association. And this specifically relates to the maintenance and operation of the Shafter Cotton Research Facility. That facility is owned by the county. It is leased to this nonprofit association where they operate it and maintain it for the benefit of the county and this, this, and, and the public. So this allocation would be to protect that public asset. They have been impacted greatly because of the COVID-19 pandemic, and, and this would go to help secure that facility and that asset for the public good. The association would agree to continue and to maintain and operate that facility through the term of their contract, which is October 9th of 2022. So this would ensure that that asset continues to be operated and maintained for roughly a two-year period. That's a similar requirement that your board placed on both the Kern County Museum and the soccer park, the, the group that operates the Kern County Soccer Park. Also, both assets owned by the county and operated for the benefit, benefit of the public. So in the same way, this allocation is similar in nature to what your board took in that regard. And finally, this, this board letter recommends the allocation of $360,000 to increase testing through the purchase and distribution of up to 12,025 gift cards. This effort would be focused on the 35 lowest quartile census tracts, and it would be managed by the Public Health Department. This would potentially increase testing by roughly 1,500 tests per week in these areas. That's roughly 166% increase within those, within that lowest quartile census tract. That is the goal of, of what we're trying to accomplish with these, with these gift card incentives. In addition to increasing testing volume, this program would also provide economic support, both to the individuals receiving those gift cards, also to the businesses within those communities that those gift cards would be spent. So of the $360,000, $300,000 translates directly into that financial support that would then circulate back through our economy. $60,000 pays for both the administration costs for the bank that would be issuing those gift cards to us, that's roughly $24,000, and the balance is allocated for Kern County staff time, as well have individuals assigned at those locations specifically dedicated to overseeing and managing the internal controls around how those gift cards are handled and distributed.
Jim, the $60, the $60,000 goes to the county in some form or another. I mean, the bank, $24,000, but the remainder to the county.
Correct. $36,000, the remainder would be allocated for county staffing and overhead costs.
Excellent. And which bank are we working through?
U.S. Bank.
U.S. Bank. Thank you very much, Mr. Zervis.
You're very welcome. Included with this board letter is an updated utilization plan, and I'm, I'm holding up a copy. It is an attachment to your board letter. The Jasmine De La Rosa caller earlier today asked about the use of CARES Act funding and wanting to know what the county's plan is to use that funding. This is the document that outlines the current spending plan for that funds has been adopted by your board. This document has been updated several times, each time by your board, and brought back before you in a public session. So I would point her, or anyone interested in how the county is spending that money, directly to that document for, for support. If I may, I, when, when it comes to the, the housing and rental assistance modification that your board took up in, in the consent agenda earlier this morning, I would point to our partnership with the Housing Authority and the City of Bakersfield in the criteria for how that program is administered and, and run. The, the funding, the criteria for applicants and such has been recommended to us by the Housing Authority. The changes that you approved today were recommended to us by the Housing Authority. They are the experts in this area, and so we're relying on their input. And when they brought to us a recommended change to that program, we brought it directly to your board with a recommendation to approve it. So we will, we will similarly, similarly entertain, you know, any other modifications that they would, they would consider necessary as well or recommended. We've also consulted with the City of Bakersfield on those modifications, and they were in concurrence. So we're trying to keep that a unified program with the city and the county, and we're trying to rely on the best practices from our program experts, the Housing Authority in this case. And, and finally, before I, I just open up to any questions, there's been several questions just about what happens if the county doesn't spend the money by the, by the end, right? December 30th is our, is our current deadline. We're all hopeful, and I think there's good likelihood that this deadline will be extended. We are working in the CAO's office to update those projections on a regular basis and understand where we're at in each one of the programs that your board has approved, and have contingency plans for how, how any remainder funds would be used so that they don't end up being returned to Washington. I can tell you that the, we have identified a, a significant amount of expenditures that are eligible for CARES Act reimbursement that are within the county. And, and in the case that, that, that a program would fall short, you know, we will come back before your board for reallocation, but we have enough internal county costs that we're not included for reimbursement, that could be considered for reimbursement before any funds would be returned to the federal government. We haven't brought that forth to date. We're trying to utilize these funds as best we can. We're also trying to maintain flexibility with hopes that that deadline gets extended. We know that funds are going to be needed to do things like testing, contact tracing, ICU nurses, programs that extend beyond December 30th. And so we're trying to retain as much flexibility as we can, seeing what the federal government is going to do, before we make a recommendation to your board in that case. But that is, that is a topic that we are constantly engaged on and working on managing so that, that we're not in danger of, of losing any funding as a county, and that we can best utilize that to meet the needs of the constituents in the county. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that your board or, or the public may have. And again, just as a reminder, Cole Carr with the Special Districts Association is on the line as well.
Outstanding. Mr. Zervis, you have my full faith and credit, as well, as well as many other observers of this government and this community, and you have upped our game, and I want to thank you for your professionalism and your love and devotion to Kern County during this truly remarkable period of our lives. So thank you. I think there's some questions, Zach, is that now or before?
Yeah, I punched in, I punched in, but I'm happy to, hello, sorry. I'm happy to hear from any of the callers that are on the line that like to speak to this item, and then, yeah.
Got it.
Thank you.
I would like to hear from Cole Carr, and I, welcome to the Kern County Board of Supervisors. I have not seen you in some time, but I'm happy to hear that you are busy at the special districts. I would love to see you and hear all about what's been happening there, but certainly I know you're doing a great job there, and we appreciate you. So welcome to the Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting. Cole Carr, if you're there, the floor is yours.
Mr. Carr, you need to unmute your phone by pressing star six.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair and fellow supervisors. My name is Cole Carr. As mentioned, I am a Public Affairs Appeals Coordinator for the California Special Districts Association. It's a nonprofit organization advocating for special districts across the state, including the 88 here in Kern County. And I'm speaking to you all this morning on behalf of these local governments in support of Agenda Item 14, which is, as mentioned, including the $2 million CARES Acts for COVID-19 expenditures for the special districts here in Kern County. And we're asking for the board's support on that. And as men, as mentioned by Mr. Zervis, here in Kern, these independent special districts provide water, race water, irrigation, parks, healthcare, mosquito abatement, public transit, public cemetery services, the list goes on, to hundreds of thousands of your constituents here in the county. And yet, despite providing these essential services that the county or city doesn't otherwise provide to our communities and their residents, the vast majority of special districts across the state, and even the country, have not had that affordable access to the coronavirus relief fund for state and local governments and for their expenditures. And it puts them at a disadvantage with deepening uncertainty over access to current and even future COVID-19 relief. And as we know here in Kern County, just a, a little more than a quarter of the districts that we've been speaking with here in, in the county have expenditures that are reimbursable under this program approaching $1 million. So this $2 million will greatly help districts here in the county respond to the pandemic and the needs within our communities. So with this COVID-19 relief fund for the districts that Kern County is looking to put aside, it'd be a leader in partnering with our fellow local governments to respond COVID-19 needs, and it would set an example of how other counties can collaborate with their special districts. And doing so would help these local districts, districts have more certainty moving forward, and will help them to continue providing critical services in our communities and to your constituents. So in closing, we thank you for your consideration and for your team's collaboration with districts here in the county to meet the need, and we encourage the board to pass the measure. And I am welcome and happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Outstanding. Excellent presentation. I know Mr. Carr used to work for our Congressman McCarthy. Looks like he was very well-trained and prepared to do the work that he is doing. So hats off to, you know, an extended member of the Kern County family. Mr. Carr, it's nice to hear from you. Do you have anything to add to that before we go to Supervisor Scrivner?
I do not, ma'am.
Okay. Zach? Oh, I'm sorry, we have some public comment. Then we'll go to Supervisor Scrivner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have one voice message submitted by Renee Donato Nelson, and we will play that at this time.
My name is Renee Donato Nelson. I don't know the Agenda Item number. It's regarding the CARES Act funds. There is a supposedly $60,000 extra dollars. I'd like to suggest that that be used to buy masks and given out when people come to test or other appropriate venues. Thank you for the ability to comment. I appreciate your time and effort.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, public comment is now complete. We'll close the public portion and return to the board. Supervisor Scrivner, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Something with the microphones, when I punch on it and it goes off. So anyway, that wasn't me. But anyways, Mr. Zervis, excuse me. I, first of all, do you want to, would you like to comment on Ms. Nelson's suggestion as far as the masks and PPE? We, there's a lot of funding that we have spent on PPE that we're not only providing to business, we've provided to businesses, but also we're going to be providing them while, while we're canvassing as, as well with our, our folks on the ground. So can you address that real quickly, and then I'll go on to a couple other points?
Absolutely. Supervisor Scrivner through the chair. The, we are actively and have been putting masks and PPE into the community through a variety of programs, so that we, we are offering businesses access to free PPE, including masks, and we've been doing that for some time, and that program is continuing to operate for, to protect the businesses and their employees.
What was the total amount on that, on that program? Did, did we end up somewhere around 4.5 million in, is that ballpark? I think it was $5 million, but, but about 500,000 was for our overhead administrative...
That's, that's right, Supervisor Scrivner. Yep. And in addition, in addition to that, we have partnered with CAP-K, and we, and we've provided over a million masks through the CAP-K program, and they are distributing it through all of their, all of their programs, whether it's a youth center activity or, or WIC operations. They are distributing those into the community at the individual levels. And so if you, if you go to WIC, for example, or First Five, or, or the programs that they operate, you would, you would get a, a pack of masks. And so there's been over, like I said, over a million masks put into the community through that operation, and that will continue through the end of December as we utilize the CARES funding. They've been a great partner in that. Then, as you referenced, as we canvass and go out door-to-door with public health, as well as at all of the standalone testing sites, I know every time I've been tested, they've, they've offered me masks, you know, after taking, after I take my test. So we are, we are really trying to take every opportunity to get masks into the community. If there is a specific gap there, I would be, I would, I would like to hear about that, and I would encourage someone to contact me directly, and we would love to, to find a way to fill that, because we are taking every opportunity to get masks into the community.
Thank you. And I got a couple of, couple of comments and then one question. First comment is, I, I really want to congratulate you and thank you personally for the effort and the heart, the real, truly the heart that you've shown in, in identifying areas of our economy and our different government, government layers. This time, we're talking about special districts, but before it was the cities, in addressing, in addressing gaps that were left after the, the federal government PPP program. in addressing gaps that were left after the federal government PPP program. I think that you have really been mindful about where we can identify different sectors that were not able to take advantage for whatever reason in the federal, the initial federal aid. And so when it comes down to the, to the local level where we have obviously a lot better handle on where the need exists in our own community, which was probably by design when we were allocated these funds, you've done a marvelous job in doing that. And so I want to congratulate you and our C O, Mr. Alsop, and then everyone who's been working on that. You know, the special districts with these multiple, multiple letters of support, obviously they are appreciative of our effort to assist them when they weren't originally part of any kind of assistance that came down from the federal level. So once again, thank you so much for doing that. I know everyone appreciates it. In regard to these gift cards, I'm supportive of this and it's not, it's not just the fact that I think it is going to help to incentivize people to come and get tested. I think it also raises awareness. When you have reports in the media, the county is doing this program, just like we did with our employees in trying to incentivize them through some additional vacation hours, it helps to continue to raise awareness of the county of Kern that we're serious about testing. It's important for us to test. We talked about how that affects our adjusted case rate and how big of a deal a couple of percentage points when it comes to that adjustment can be for us in moving from the purple tier, hopefully back to the red tier as soon as possible. The other, the other part too, as you mentioned, is the 300,000 additional economic stimulus that that's going to provide in the community, getting more money into the community, ultimately into our businesses' hands because obviously they are suffering. And the question I have for you, will this be online for our efforts in Delano that we're doing this week? I know we have folks out there, but we're planning, I believe you said on Thursday, Mr. Constantine, to have a testing site in those. Will we be able to get this up and running in time for Thursday? I know that's a big ask, but I am curious if we'll be able to implement this that quickly.
We will do our best. That's a short timeframe. Actually, getting, getting the cards is going to be the challenge. Internally, we can make that happen, but physically getting, we want to be able to hand those gift cards out at the testing location and I don't know that we can get them that quickly. If we can, we'll be there.
Okay. Yeah, like I said, I know that that would be difficult to get, to get that turned around since we're just approving it today, but presumably I'm going to be supportive of it. But I did, I'm sure some people are curious if they might have that opportunity. And so I do, once again, greatly appreciate your effort and thank you for reaching out to the Cotton Growers Association. That was one of those other ones that, that kind of fell through the cracks as far as the federal aid was concerned and you jumped right on it. And I know that they're very appreciative of it. And so I know my colleagues probably have some comments. I see Supervisor Maggard punched in, but I'll be supportive of this and I'd be happy to make a motion or a second when we get to that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Zach, thank you so much. One thing to consider too, while it's not perfect and nothing is right now, as you know, we can hand out something on Thursday, to Zach's point, where folks can follow back up at the Health Department in a few days and pick it up if it's next. You know, you'd just be amazed how much that incentivizes people.
That's a, that's a good idea.
That occurred to me, but I, you know, I don't know if they, if they needed to be very tight on the, on the accounting for it, but that occurred to me as well.
Well, Zach should get the credit. He communicated with me, you know, telepathically. And really, it's actually that line of questioning that got me thinking about it. So I love that. So Jim, thank you. I do think it would, you know, we can pass out little things that people can come by later, a little slip and, you know, to get your money. And money is a big motivator, as you know, especially right now.
It is.
And I'm so grateful for the creativity here and what we're going to see as a result of it. Zach, again, excellent line of questioning. Thank you. Supervisor Maggard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Zervis, good job with all this. I appreciate your leadership in this area. Where can these gift cards be spent?
So these are Visa branded gift cards. They can be spent anywhere.
Anywhere.
Anywhere that accepts Visa.
Okay, that's good. And if a mom and four of her kids show up at a site in Delano or wherever it is that this is occurring in these census tracts, do they get five cards? If her and her four kids all get tested?
Yes.
Yeah, good answer. Okay. Yeah, yeah.
Supervisor Maggard, we're currently planning on one card per individual per day.
Per day? So you mean I could get tested today and I could get tested tomorrow and I could get tested the next day?
Yes.
I'm just glad there's a benefit to having four kids.
Mr. Scrivner may be showing up in Delano or someplace with his van full of kids. Okay, that's great news. And it's, I'm happy to reward those families for participating and anything we can do to help, because particularly with those census tracts we're talking about, they have enough problems already. So anything we can do to help would be helpful. So that's great news. Let's make sure, make sure people, make sure people know that and that'll help us move this along. Thank you.
That is spot on Supervisor Maggard. I really think it's a great motivator and I would like to point out the irony that Zach Scrivner has doubled the amount of children that I have. And I think that that entitles him to those extra gift cards for sure because good Lord, they're expensive, right? Thank you. Do we have any other matters? Kathy, before we go to a motion?
No.
Okay.
Unless Supervisor Couch has any comments?
Oh, I'm sorry again, Supervisor Couch.
I'm ready to vote.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I'm happy to second Supervisor Scrivner's motion.
My, my motion was implied, but I'll reiterate it. Motion to approve staff's recommendation. Thank you Supervisor Maggard.
Thank you, Zach, and thank you Supervisor Maggard for the motion and the second. Those are our task force members from this board. I think they're doing an excellent job. Thank you.
I'll call for the vote. Supervisor Gleason?
Aye.
Excuse me, Supervisor Scrivner?
Aye.
Supervisor Maggard? Supervisor Couch?
Yes.
Supervisor Perez?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. We're going to move to our final item of this morning's agenda, which is item number 17 with the Fire Department's status report on Alert Wildfire Initiative between General Services Communications Division, Information Technology Services, and the Fire Department. Chief Witt, it's nice to see you. You look healthy and happy to be here, which always makes me happy. So good to see you.
Good to see you too. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. I'm happy to say I'm not here to make any cuts or ask for money or talk about any tumultuous type items, but rather what we're doing with technology for the future and improving our services to the county of Kern. And I'm really excited about it and I'll turn the floor over to Chief Wells and Dr. Driscoll.
Madam Chair, members of the board, good morning. And it's my honor, I'd like to introduce you to Dr. Neil Driscoll, co-director of Alert Wildfire and professor at University of California, San Diego. And he's going to help introduce Alert Wildfire.
Good morning. Madam Chair, board supervisors, thanks for making time for us to discuss Alert Wildfire and the successful collaboration with Kern County. This collaboration was born out of a vision of Madam Chair, Chief Witt, Chief Wells, where we would collaborate together to deploy fire cameras in Tier Two, Tier Three fire threat regions around Kern County. Kern County is a hub, an important hub of this effort to map out and confirm fires early on. And the whole goal of this project is to save lives, preserve wildlife and habitats, and protect property. So you might be asking, what is Alert Wildfire? So here, we've developed a network of high-definition pan tilt zoom cameras with near infrared fire detection for at night. They can see 70 miles during the day and 120 miles at night. We've built our own microwave communications network for increased resilience. So we're not tied to Verizon or AT&amp;T, it's our own network. And this here provides us this unparalleled ability to confirm 911 calls. We want to fight fire in the incipient phase, improve situational awareness, and it helps sequence evacuations. So here, what is Alert Wildfire? Where did it start? It started in universities, University of San Diego, University of Nevada Reno, and the University of Oregon. It's a nonprofit. It was established in 2013 and we've been up and running with very few instruments down. We have over 680 cameras now in California. So you can see that 60 went in since we made this slide and submitted it to you. So our collaboration with Kern County, Kern County is in a unique position because it touches almost seven, eight other counties around it. And it's allowed us to populate these areas that are high-risk burn corridors with cameras. Next slide. We build everything. The access camera, we build on these candy canes, we install Roan Towers, solar panels, we have backup power for each site for five days in case of a PSPS. Next slide. We have mobile units that we can be deployed by the local fire departments and counties to get views into canyons and areas that are not imaged by the cameras themselves. We build everything, all of the electronics, everything is built in a university setting, training students for tomorrow. So here, a couple of the capabilities of the cameras. So we can triangulate using the cameras and we can get a very accurate position of where the fire is. So next slide. So here we can get ignition. Just a few years ago, we'd have to send an engine to a mountaintop or launch an aircraft. Now, within seconds, we can determine where the ignition is very accurately and we can then marshal our resources. Next slide. So I just want to talk to you about this incipient fire face. This is our goal. Every fire starts small. This here is the Camp Fire, that devastated paradise. And you can see in the first upper left, there's faint wisps of smoke, but five minutes later, you know there's a fire. And 35 minutes later, this is an inferno that we're not on offense, we're on defense. Okay? This situational awareness is critically important to how we marshal our resources and pre-position them in wind-driven events. Next slide. This is the Wall Fire from about five miles away. You can see the tornadic activity. The Car Fire spawned EF3 tornadoes. The Creek Fire recently this year spawned EF1 and EF2 tornadoes. So this just increases the disaster. It gets embers higher up into the atmosphere and the efficiency of spotting gets much greater. Next slide. So this is the Lilac Fire, December 2017. You'll notice up in the upper right corner, you're going to see the fire erupt. Those are dust devils at first. Here the fire starts there. We can see that this is red flag condition. The smoke is bent over. Chief Meacham of Cal Fire was able to divert resources that were going to another fire to come here because of the severity. So these are examples and red flag conditions of how these cameras help us understand fire behavior and how to attack it. Next slide. This is the Kincaid Fire. This is using the near infrared. So at night, we're able to detect these starts. Next slide. So this here is a movie of Barnum North. You'll see that here we're scrolling along and there's a light on the back of the horizon. That's there at Geyser Peak, okay? And the wire failed, high winds, it dropped, and you're going to watch the fire ignite. So we had the camera serendipitously pointed right at where the fire ignited. So here, there it goes. The fire started. At St. Helena, Chief Ben Nichols was able to see this. He was able to understand the severity of this disaster and was able to deploy twice as many people, first responders, to help evacuate. Next slide. So the Kincaid Fire was much larger than the Tubbs Fire, but because of the practice and Supervisor Rabbit and Sonoma getting the alerts out, using the cameras, using new technology, we were able to mobilize 170,000 people, evacuate them in a wind-driven event with no loss of life. That's what we're trying to do here. That's what Kern County is working with us to do and it's a great success story. Thanks, guys. Next slide. So here, just to wrap up my section of this, we actually now have 47 cameras in Kern County, so we've gotten two more in since we gave this, sent you this presentation. Critically important, I'm an academic, I'm a seismologist, I study earthquakes. So how did I get into this business? We had sensors for early earthquake detection and we had enough bandwidth to put fire cameras on there, okay? But this whole program reflects the vision of Madam Chair, Chief Witt, Chief Wells. We met about a year and a half ago and we've gotten 47 cameras in critical burn areas to help save lives, protect environments, and habitats. This is, this is a great success story. And you know what we learned from this? We learned from the first responders, they give us insights and feedbacks of how to work together. So it's just a natural thing and I wanted to come here and say thanks.
You know, I love your passion, I love your presentation. I mean, I can see why people listen to you. I remember we had that meeting in the Point Conference Room and it's rare that, you know, things come to fruition in such a helpful way. Frankly, you have a thousand conversations all the time and this one has proven to be meaningful and fruitful and I'm so grateful for you. And you didn't mention the inadvertent benefit that you'll also be able to catch some UFO activity on these.
Let's hold.
Let's hold, yeah. So get that to me right away. That's the good stuff. Really, thank you. And, you know, welcome to the 21st century, Kern County, right? I mean, this is really, really cool stuff.
So here, Chief Wells is going to take over and talk specifically to benefits of fires that happened in Kern County. Go Kern County, you're the big hub of Alert Wildfire.
I love Kern County. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Driscoll. I'd like to draw your attention to video that I'll show. This is a fire that happened in the community of Hart Flat. The Flat Fire occurred on July 9th and it was one of our first successes with Alert Wildfire. Our fire dispatchers were able to turn and pan tilt zoom the camera to the fire. We were able to confirm that we had a working fire early on and based on the visual representation that Alert Wildfire gives us as firefighters, we were able to dispatch an additional wave on top of our initial alarm to help mitigate and send support firefighters to control and contain this fire. What we see is transition from years past where when a call comes in from 911 and we dispatch firefighters out, there's a delay for them to get on scene and get that first report. That first report is always audible report and now Alert Wildfire is giving us eyes early on in that incipient phase that Dr. Driscoll alluded to earlier. This is a quilt of many different cameras. Now that we have 47 cameras in Kern County, some are fixed, some are on a rotation or patrol status. And as we saturate more view sheds in Kern County, what we're seeing is we're able to observe and orient our environment, not just necessarily when an incident occurs, but pre-incident conditions. And that gives firefighters the ability to understand what's going on in their first end. And we're, with the help of Alert Wildfire, this is giving us the opportunity to transition from reactive to a more proactive stance. This fire is called the Bitter Fire. It actually happened this month and what, based on having cameras located in many different corners of the county, it just happened to be positioned. We got a call in to the 911 center notifying us of a vehicle accident. Within 60 seconds of that 911 call, our fire dispatchers turned the camera and zoomed in. We were able to identify not only a vehicle accident, but a vehicle fire that communicated into the vegetation and started a grass fire. We scale up our resources to be at appropriate response to handle the threat of wildfire and we're able to observe not only during the incident, but monitor containment well after the firefighters leave the scene. So over the last year, we started with four cameras and we've scaled up to now almost 50 cameras. We've concentrated on our communities that are vulnerable to the threat of wildfire. We focused on Pine Mountain Club, Fraser Park, La Beque, Stallion Springs, Bear Valley, Hart Flat, Walker Basin, Lake Isabella, Wofford Heights, and Glenville and Woody. We look to go to the remote edges and not just near the urban centers, but these cameras are at their best when they're up at high points and giving us that high point advantage. So this is the last video that I'll play for you. This was the Sheep Fire that happened July 30th and the vision of the fire is not necessarily clear, but that's the reality for firefighters is conditions aren't always optimal. clear, but that's the reality for firefighters is conditions aren't always optimal. And what Alert Wildfire is doing is giving us that visual perspective of fire as it moves. It doesn't always go the way we want. And so we have that setback perspective as we respond into the scene. It helps us with route selection. And in order to make this possible, what Dr. Driscoll and Kern County Fire has done is we collaborated between county departments. And I'd like to give recognition to County Communications and Jake Myers and his team, my fire IT staff, who I lean on heavily, and County ITS, who helped connect us to the network. And we moved past just county sites. We did public-private partnerships to reach out with applied technology and GeoLinks so that we could expand this network to its full potential and that we can now harness within the fire department. And it is being used daily. So it definitely takes a village. So in conclusion, I'd just like to reiterate, we are utilizing this in the early suppression, that incipient phase that Dr. Driscoll mentioned. That's when fire is at its smallest. And with our firefighting effective response force, if we deploy it quick enough, we give, we have the best potential in order to contain and control it before it gets out of hand. So 2018 was a very difficult year. We saw a high loss of life and high property loss. And this year, we've seen incredible amount of acres burned. And we believe that Alert Wildfire is giving Kern County the opportunity to look at this risk component of wildfire different and to do something different so that we can give our community and protect our community and keep them safe. So with that, that will conclude our presentation and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Outstanding. Thank you for your hard work and collaboration. It just makes so much sense. Do we have any questions from the public?
We do not.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Anything from you before we go to action? Doctor, thank you for your expertise and for this very exciting opportunity. We appreciate you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion. This is exciting. Thank you, Chief, for the follow-through. Not all at once, gentlemen.
Well, I'll, let's see. Receive, the motion is to receive and file, but I'll, I'll make a motion to receive and file. I want to congratulate you, Madam Chair and, and Chief Witt, for your, for your efforts here. And I'm sorry, also, our battalion chief, is it Wells? Sorry, I'm sorry, excuse me. I was, I was looking through my pages to make sure I had that right. Battalion Chief Wells, congratulations to you as well. This looks like a great program, and I'm happy to see that Hart Flat was the first place that that was utilized. That's in the Second District. And I know that the residents are grateful for all of your efforts. And so I'm happy to make that motion. Thank you.
Excellent.
Second.
Excellent. Exciting. Thank you so much. We have a motion and a second, and we need a roll call vote.
Supervisor Gleason?
Yes.
Supervisor Scrivner?
Aye.
Supervisor Maggard?
Aye.
Maggard, excuse me. Supervisor Couch?
Yes.
And Supervisor Perez?
Yes, thank you so much.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Motion carries. We're going to resume to closed session now, and we'll be back at 2 for our PM. Thank you, Mick, for the motion. And happy birthday again. Feliz cumpleaños, amigo. All done.